All right, everyone. We are officially starting our meeting and wanted to say for the record, we're starting late because there were technology issues. All of us were here on time. I'm Commissioner Alicia Reeves, Vice President of Hamilton County Commission, and I'll be leading the meeting today. I would like to put a motion to excuse Commissioner President Stephanie Summeral-Dumas.
Say it. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
And then on the dais, we'll allow everybody to introduce themselves.
Lisa Daria, Deputy Clerk.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Horn.
Good afternoon, Hamilton County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator, Michael Brim, Legal Counsel.
Okay, we're gonna start with, we've got a great action pack. This place is packed with some wonderful people who are breast cancer survivors and fighters and supporters. But first, we're gonna go to our Health Commissioner, who's also a fighter, obviously, for great health. Commissioner Castaman, our Health Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for having me today. I will start off with my COVID update, and then I will hand it over to Darcy Smith, who can talk about Narcan and fentanyl test strips today. So first up, we continue to see a decline in COVID cases within Hamilton County. Our seven-day average right now is about 75 cases per day, which continues to slowly decline. We continue to see relief countywide. Every jurisdiction is starting to go back to that nice yellow shade, and hopefully eventually we'll start seeing the entire map in the shade of blue, which is the lowest on that scale. As far as what we are seeing, all of the various sub-variants on the right are still a sub-variant of the Omicron version of COVID-19. There is a new sub-variant that's kind of starting to pop up, which is the VQ1 and the VQ1.1. There's no reason to see any, that we are going to see any significant increases because of this. It still remains fairly low within our community. This is, these numbers are for the United States. Our region is just slightly lower than that with regards to those new sub-variants. As far as hospitalizations and intensive period admissions, which seem to be probably the most accurate numbers that we have to look at these days, we continue to see a decline in both of those metrics. We have 103 individuals within our hospitals and 17 individuals within the ICU. So those are both continuing to drop as well. Vaccination efforts continue. The good news is we now have one additional vaccine, both the Pfizer and a Moderna, for those children that are five years and older. Similar to adults, they have to have at least two months since their last vaccination before we're allowed to get one of the follow-by insulin boosters. But now we have even greater coverage for our entire general population. Switching over to monkeypox, we continue really to see no increases since I last met with the Commission about two weeks ago. Hamilton County still has only 14 cases of monkeypox, which is also very numerous. And then one last look at monkeypox. On the national scale, you can see the seven-day average continues to decline for monkeypox right now. Nationally, we are only seeing 65 cases of monkeypox per day. With that, I would be happy to take any questions before I switch it over to my colleague.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions, Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions. Thank you again for your contribution.
Absolutely. So I'd like to introduce Darcy Smith. She works for Hamilton County Public Health as our Senior Community Outreach Coordinator.
Hello, you guys. Thank you for having me. So today I'm gonna talk a little bit about what naloxone is, how it works, where you can get it from us, and also fentanyl test strips and where you can get them from Hamilton County Public Health. So naloxone is basically an opioid antagonist. So it reverses the effects that opioids are having on the brain. Commonly, it's referred to as Narcan, which is the name brand that we purchase, but we also have generic naloxone. So they are often used interchangeably when they're talked about. Several positives about naloxone. There's no potential for abuse. So there would be no reason that people would be using it outside of, to reverse an overdose. There's no harmful side effects. So if you use it on someone that maybe you think is overdosing and they're not, they're not gonna have any negative health consequences from doing so. It does not reverse non-opioid overdoses. So again, if you're not sure what somebody, if they're not breathing or they're not responsive and you think maybe it's an opioid overdose, it's better to use naloxone if you have it, because again, there won't be harmful side effects to them. And it must be stored at room temperature. A lot of times, people do keep it in their cars because that's kind of convenient. We just don't really know the breakdown of like how fast it stops a medicine from being as effective. So if you can keep it in a room and away from the life, that's best. But we always tell people, any naloxone that you have is better than no naloxone. So even if it was expired or half-way in your car, if that's all you have, you should still use that. Our typical shelf life is 36 months now. And again, we tell people, even if it's, you know, 37 months or over, you can still use it if that's all you have. But if yours is expired, you can always get it from the home department. So just some ways to recognize an overdose. A person is passed out, snoring, appears like they're not breathing, if they have blue lips, a super pale face. There's drug paraphernalia nearby, obviously, unresponsive. One way you can kind of tell if you're not sure if someone's just nodding out or if they're actually unresponsive is you can let them know that you're gonna, once you try and see if they're okay, you can let them know that you're gonna use Narcan on them. And then usually, if they are still kind of responsive, they'll let you know that they do not need naloxone and ask you not to administer it. So what would you do if you did come across a scene where there might be an overdose? Obviously, ensuring the scene is safe is our first step that we always tell people. You want to make sure that you're not putting yourself in harm's way. So not touching anything that may, like if they still have syringe by them, you don't want to be touching any of that. If they're maybe halfway in the street, you don't want to put yourself or that person at risk to get in a car. So just ensuring the safety of the scene. Confirming that the person is unresponsive. So just saying hello, "Are you okay?" You don't need to touch them or any kind of physical interventions if you're not comfortable with that, but just asking if they're okay before you administer the naloxone. Always call 911. We recommend people do that first because as you get caught up in that scene, you might forget. And then you've been sitting there for 10 minutes and the person's unresponsive and first responders still haven't arrived because you forgot to call 911. So then you would administer the first dose. I brought a box to show you. There's two doses in here. If you are on the scene and were nervous, it actually shows you on the box how to do it. There's instructions in the box. So just a lot of touch points to remind you of how to use it. You would administer the first dose. It's just like a nasal spray, like Flonase or something. Doesn't matter what noshule you put it in. And then we'll start working instantly, but it does take a few minutes to reach full effect. So we ask that people would wait three to five minutes before doing another dose if the person doesn't seem to be responsive. One thing we also try and tell people, when you're using naloxone, it's working if they're starting to become responsive again and starting to breathe again. So they don't need to be popping back up, standing up, walking around. And a lot of times, I think people, because it's their loved ones or someone they don't know even, they're nervous that it's not working. So they continue to give doses when the person has started to breathe again. So just something to think about. And then just waiting on the scene until first responders arrive. And if you have, if you use one dose and they don't seem to be responding, they're not breathing, you can go ahead and use that second dose. And then by then, hopefully EMS has arrived. So this is just kind of like a quick, easy one. You peel back the package that's inside. You place it in their nose and then you push the plunger, just like you were using the nasal spray, and it will start immediately working. Just some things to keep in mind. Also, after you administer the naloxone, people might not be super happy if they do kind of become responsive because now they're not feeling very well. They could be going into immediate withdrawal. So they could be getting sick, they'll start sweating. So just keeping their safety again in mind and your safety. You can put them in the recovery position, which is where you put their top leg that's now on the ground up so that prevents them from rolling over. Put their arm out to protect their head. Just be aware that they might become combative. They might try and leave the scene. They might be mad at you. And it's not your job to force them to stay. If you have called EMS and are waiting for them to arrive still. If they're gonna leave the scene, they're gonna leave the scene. You can just wait to make sure that you can tell the police or EMS what happened and where the person might have gone or what they looked like. But again, you don't need to be restraining them. Keep them at the safety. We always want you to stay safe in this process. So there's several ways you can get naloxone from us. You can come to our office and pick it up. We're down here on Main Street. But you can also go to our location on McMillan. If that's more convenient, just let us know. We have our mail order program. So you text Narcan to 22999. We have an email address that I check. Any of our mobile services, Safe Services sites, you can pick up naloxone. And then we also do a lot of community events to try and get the awareness and access for the general population who might not know as much about naloxone. So anytime we're there, you can get that for a regular as well. And then so we go on to fentanyl test strips. That's what they look like. They kind of look like those pH sticks if you ever had like a hot tub or something. You only need a little bit of your supply to test to see if there's fentanyl in it. It provides a result within minutes. So it's super fast and convenient. One line means there's fentanyl present, two lines means there isn't. So that can be a little confusing sometimes. But a negative test doesn't necessarily rule out that there's no fentanyl because you're only taking a sliver. Depending on how that substance was mixed, if it's like a pressed pill, for example, one part of it might have fentanyl, the other part might not. So just something to keep in mind. And it might not, it might detect the fentanyl or any of its analogs, but it's not gonna tell you other harmful things that are in it. So other chemicals, other substances that might have been added to the drug aren't gonna be picked up by the fentanyl test strip. So when you get them from us, they come in this prepackaged bag. There's five test strips and a QR code. And when you scan that QR code, these instructions that were put together by one of, a member of our team, Hannah, that walk you through all the steps. They're pretty self-explanatory of how to use it and how like, and kind of putting it in different terms. So instead of saying like milliliters, it says like a shot glass full of water or half a shot glass. So trying to put it in terms that people would understand when they're using them. And when you text, you can get them through texting our Safe Services. And then we do partner with some local restaurants and bars and businesses, but we don't necessarily advertise them because it's not meant to be a place where you seek them out. It's if you're using those, if you're eating at that restaurant and you see it and you think you might need it. But it is a place you can get them. And when you text the link to have them mailed to you, those instructions will also be on there so you can have access to the instructions. And that's it. If there's any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for this presentation. And hopefully, we'll be able to get it to play again because I think you gave some great information so people can understand it. Also, I want to make sure we put it on our website. And they have it on yours. We'll put it on our website as well because you gave out some very good information and you get it in a way that everybody can understand. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You know, I think it's important that we be reminded that all of us can be first responders if we're carrying Narcan. Because I, you never know. I've encountered twice now someone who was overdosed and I've called 911. The one time, I was on my bike, so I didn't have Narcan and I couldn't do anything about it. My assistant back in the day, his name was Nate, encountered somebody over at the casino that had passed out. He administered Narcan and brought him back. So, you know, and these are just random episodes, especially if you know someone, especially a family member perhaps, that is using maybe on the road to recovery and you just, you need to have Narcan on you just in case you encounter someone that has overdosed. And as you say, there's no negative effect if they've, you know, there's something else that's going on there. There's no negative effect for administering Narcan. So I really am grateful for the information, I think. As a community, we are getting to that space where we all want to be helpful if the opportunity presents itself and is appearing in Narcan. There's just that capacity. So thanks again for the presentation. The fentanyl test strips, extremely important. We had that overdose alert just a couple of weeks ago because there's fentanyl being mixed into the drug supply and you never know what you're using. And so people that are using, while that's a dangerous scenario, it can be very deadly if you are taking fentanyl and you don't know it. So thank you for the information regarding the fentanyl test strips as well.
So thank you. The only thing I will say, you had on there, snoring. Now people get, you know, because a lot of folks are snoring. So that's not the only.
Yes, snoring's not the only. But I dare you now, really, when a deep, like kind of gurgly snore with a pale face and things. But yes, snoring only is not a reason to administer naloxone.
I want to make sure. I saw some faces out there looking like, oh, boy. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Now we have a special presentation. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And last year, we started to say, hey, let's have a Breast Cancer Awareness Day in Hamilton County, turn Hamilton County pink. And there are a lot of organizations and people that are having events. A lot of people who are breast cancer survivors and fighters and people who have loved ones that have fought this terrible, terrible situation of breast cancer. And one of the things I experienced is my mother passed away at 57 years young from breast cancer. And she fought for 12 years. And I want to really thank the Barrett Center. Without that, I don't think she could have made 12 days. I was with her, but we got a surprise diagnosis that she had stage four cancer. And at that time, they felt she only had 90 days to live. She went on for 12 years. I was a major advocate for others to get mammograms, early, early detection and those kinds of things. And I know Commissioner Dreehouse's sister is a breast cancer survivor. So we thought that we would have something at our county to highlight the importance of breast cancer. And we've done it through our Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Guffey is here. The Police Department in Cincinnati as well. And the Fire Department. The Fire Chief was here earlier. But we also have survivors that are here and we always want to acknowledge. And we want to acknowledge them. If they were acknowledged last year, acknowledge them again this year because I learned that every year, every day that you fight and you fight against this is another day of survival. So we wanted to have that. Until today, we've been in pink. And I want to thank my Office, Veda Stevens, and Quinton Monroe and the Offices of Commissioner Dreehouse as well as President Summeral-Dumas on this day. And I want to also thank and recognize Teresa Kent. Came in as a volunteer and always sets up the table. And we have a great cake from Grater's. And Kim Moreno, who helped decorate as well. Everybody chipping in, as well as our staff and administration. So today, we're also gonna honor some of our staff through our administration and our different departments, who are also survivors. This Saturday is the Walk of American Cancer Society. So a lot of people will be, over 10,000 people now, registered to walk this Saturday. And excited to walk with them as well as we live to walk another day. Lastly, I had mentioned last week, and Commissioner Dreehouse's support of it. And I want to thank her for that. And as well as President Dumas, we want to look at having a cancer commission or caucus so that we can look at this issue, not just breast cancer, but there's funding federally. The President of the United States, Joe Biden, has said, "We're gonna take on cancer and we can come up with a vaccine for COVID." And we did it in a quick way and saved a lot of lives. We can do it for cancer. It doesn't matter what you, what party you are and how much money you have. You can go from no dollars to gazillions of dollars. You can go from old to young babies. Cancer is wiping us out. It is something that we all, I don't care if Democrat, Republican, Independent, whatever. It doesn't care. It's coming after people and our families, coming after us. And we want to be ready to be an example in the whole country to make sure that Hamilton County's out front. So wanted to highlight that. We've got a couple of proclamations and then certificates that we have. And so I would start with the proclamations. Then we'll have the certificates. As we say your name with the certificates, come on behind us and join us for a photo. I'm gonna ask Sheriff Guffey to join us in that presentation of that. I also want to acknowledge State Representative Cedric Denson, who is here and was one of the co-sponsors of a new law that has helped women with breast cancer detection and making sure money won't stop you from getting the help that you need. So with that, myself and Commissioner Dreehouse. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you for bringing this again to the attention of the county, having the celebration for the survivors in the room. And just the acknowledgement that this is such a severe and dire problem, really, in this community with breast cancer awareness and breast cancer in general. So I watched my sister struggle. She's a survivor. She's two years older than I am. And it was really hard to watch her go through that and the challenges associated. She still has long-term effects from the radiation and chemotherapy that she underwent, as I'm sure many of you do. And so thank you for being here. Thank you, Commissioner Reese, for bringing this again forward to this Commission. We can't say it enough, as you said. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to celebrate with all of you and celebrate the survivors in the room.
Thank you. So we will start with the first recognition and each of the organizations in here will receive a copy of the proclamation. And I will start off with the beginning. Whereas in 1985, the American Cancer Society began National Breast Cancer Awareness Month as an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. And whereas the National Breast Cancer Foundation estimates one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. And an estimated 43,600 women will die from breast cancer in the United States.
And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer in American women, except for skin cancers, and on average, every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one out of every 100 breast cancers diagnosed in the United States is found in a man. And whereas, there are over 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States.
Whereas the Hamilton County Sheriff and the Cincinnati Police Department and Fire Department wear pink badges yearly in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas in Hamilton County, there are many organizations and partners that continue to help breast cancer patients search for a cure through vital research and educate our community about the importance of early detection being the best protection, including the following. The American Cancer Society, making strides against breast cancer. Dr. Anne Brown, UC Health. The Barrett Cancer Center, TriHealth. The Susan G. Komen Foundation. The Black and White Cancer Survivors Foundation. Sinai Temple Number 59 Shriners. And Court Number 35 Daughters. And many more. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, hereby proclaim the 18th day of October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Day in all of Hamilton County. And I would ask if Dr. Brown would come forward as well as, will you be accepted on behalf of UC Health? So you come forward. Is anyone else from the organization's American Cancer? She said, come forward. We'll come around.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Reese. Commissioner Dreehouse. I really appreciate you with the platform that you have, spreading this important message. Of course, no better time than National Breast Cancer Awareness Month to shed the light on this important issue and really bring it home to women, especially after the pandemic, the importance of early detection. We are still not back to our pre-pandemic numbers with screening mammograms. Screening colonoscopy has suffered as well. We have a deficit, just in 2020 alone, four million screening exams, mammograms, and then four million colonoscopies that did not happen. Early detection, we know, is key to treating and surviving breast cancer. If we find cancers early, that means over a 90% cure rate for our patients. And those who have survived it know that it can be a tough road if it is not caught early. Never easy, but we always hope for a cure. So I hope that this reaches the ears of a lot of women. And if anyone has delayed getting their mammogram, that they come to us this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. American Cancer Society, we've got the big walk today, this weekend.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Reese, for having us again today and for spreading this critical message about early detection and screening. In your words, early detection is the best protection. And that is, that rate is so true. As a bit of good news in our breast cancer journey, the mortality rate has dropped 42% in the last couple of decades. Yes. And to reiterate at data point you already stated, there are 3.8 million breast cancer survivors currently living in the United States alone. But we continue to fight and we're so excited to continue that fight this Saturday, October 22, with our Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk to be able to celebrate, remember, and really just fight on, celebrating all of our survivors, remembering those who have unfortunately lost their battle, and also appreciating our caregivers too as a critical part of our cancer community. So thank you again for having us and for spreading this critical message. And we'll continue fighting alongside you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next proclamation that we're presenting, and then we'll have certificates to our survivors, goes to Michelle Young. And she has a very long proclamation. And we also want to acknowledge that President Dumas's office, she couldn't be here today, but I wanted to let you know that they submitted you for this wonderful proclamation. So I'm gonna read it a little bit, Michelle, because I can't, I'd be here all night. Michelle's, Michelle Young is a fighter for equality and social justice and is rooted by the example of her parents, who spent their lives as New York City Police School teachers in working with impoverished minorities and immigrants. And the inspiration of her twin sister. I didn't know you were a twin. Michelle arrived in Cincinnati on a Greyhound bus to work as a law clerk to legendary civil rights Judge George Edwards Jr. While in Cincinnati, Michelle met Greg Young. The two have been married for 31 years and have raised five children in her adopted home. Going to say, Michelle was part of the legal team that brought justice to the family of Gabriel Te, an eight-year-old child who committed suicide after being bullied. The landmark $3 million settlement helped turn the Cincinnati Public Schools into a school of justice model for the nation. Michelle was part of the successful pro bono effort to free Tyra Patterson after 23 years of wrongfully imprisonment for a crime she did not commit. In addition, Michelle is working with my good friend Patricia Collins. We know her as Peppermint Patty Collins, Lucy Collins' wife of the Lucy Collins Foundation, to lift up the lives of local children. Operation Backpack, the Armed Forces Ticket Association, to give out art and sports tickets to our veterans and the Cincinnati leaders to support Asian-American inclusion. Whereas in 2018, Michelle was diagnosed with stage four breast cancer and told to go through her bucket list. After the diagnosis, Michelle's list now included beating cancer and changing the laws to provide all women the right to affordable and effective screening technology. Michelle assembled an all-star team to accomplish this goal, which included UC Health. And whereas part of the team, Michelle authorized, Michelle authored, advocated and helped shepherd what became Ohio House Bill 371. Michelle advocated for months, delivering pink carnations throughout the state house, testifying and knocking on the doors of legislators. Ohio House Bill 371 was signed into law on June 24, 2022. Whereas Michelle is a Georgetown University Law Center graduate of counsel to George S. Young Company, LPA, and runs her own law firm focused on social justice, Michelle Young, C-O-L-P-A. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize October 22 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and commends Michelle Young for her role as a breast cancer survivor and advocate. Be it further proclaimed Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, proclaim the 19th Day of October 2022, Michelle L. Young Day.
I apologize, my, I won't win in this. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Reese. I want to thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. I want to thank you, Bishop Hilton and Commissioner Dumas, who's recovering at home, for this opportunity. And this time, I hope that it will be brief. I want to take this opportunity to highlight October's opportunity, Hamilton County's opportunity, speaking in the word is breast cancer. If breast cancer is detected early, there's a 99% survival rate. Unfortunately, under our current patchwork of laws across the country today, your chances of survival are dependent upon where you live, what kind of insurance you have, if you can afford to pay the deductible, what race you are and how old you are. And four years ago, as a stage four breast cancer list patient newly diagnosed, I was told to complete my bucket list. And instead, now I did. I have been in the commission for three years. And our team has ensured that we are the model for the nation with early screening as the right for every woman. Thanks to our Cincinnati team, and I want to shout them out here, the amazing partners of UC Health, Dr. Elise Lowry, Dr. Annie Brown, Dr. Mary Mahoney, Candice Sabres, representatives Cedric Denson and Jean Schmidt, Young Public Interest Fellows Jared Marsh and Ben Pretzinger, and the endless support of my husband Brett. Every woman in Ohio now has a right to an annual mammogram, coverage of supplemental truth screenings, where the judgment calls are made by the actual radiologist, not by an insurance company. Clear notification of breast density and insurance coverage. We are now in a position to save thousands of lives. And it's time now to turn to the nation and allow all women the same rights as we have in Ohio. And your help is needed. So don't think you leave here without me asking for something. We now can change the nation, and Hamilton County can do this. Why? First, because we have Alicia Reese, who can do just about anything. We know that. And we have Denise Dreehouse. And we have the power, as we have always, to punch above our weight. Cincinnati, the list of accomplishments is long. We solved polio. We're the home to the first professional basketball team, the first fire department. And now we can make Ohio the leader in breast cancer. Now you may say, could it happen? I know it's happening. Right now, tomorrow, I'm going to be in Cincinnati for another meeting where we celebrate women who fought breast cancer. And at the same time, in Connecticut, there's going to be a legis of a Congresswoman coming out for early detection of breast cancer. I know that we can end breast cancer. And I know that the same way that Bengals made the playoffs, and Hepsi made the playoffs, and I'm an early commission, this is a small task for us. We can be the little city that ends breast cancer deaths, saves tens of thousands of women's lives every year for generations to come. And we can do it this year. So I want to say to you, this is the next step. And I'm really grateful for tomorrow because I feel that tomorrow, with the same legislation, the end of this story, HB 371 is, that somewhere far away in Derby, Connecticut, our ideas are becoming the national thought. I'm ready for the next step with Alicia, with you, and with everyone here. And of course, our great Bishop. And next year, this time, we're going to be celebrating Washington.
Michelle, one second. You got to come up and get your proclamation. I'll take a picture. And I'm staring from the balcony to join us. She's ready to go to Washington right now. Dr. Brown. And Cedric Denson. And Denson. All right. Now we have several survivors, lots of survivors in the audience. We're going to ask you to come up when your name is called. And we'll give you a certificate, then we'll take a big picture with some behind us. So I'm going to call out some, and then Commissioner Dreehouse. Okay, Shawna Robinson. If y'all can clap when they come up. Bonita Weechman. Weechman, Bonita Weechman. Come on up, come on up.
1021, Ebony Nelson.
Angela Hilton. Cincinnati Police.
Sean Makenji Brooks.
Norma Kinsey.
Kim Moreno Maes.
Keep moving down.
Tara Isaacs Phoenix. Teresa Kent.
She's outside, getting ready to start. Let's go get a clap. You all come on up.
Lynette Hines. Elizabeth Hayden. And Pat Lee.
Did we forget anyone? We got everybody? Let's give it up for our five American fighters. Do you want us to see?
You can stay seated. And then you just come up. I just kind of gather in here. Thank you. Perfect. And I'm just going to take, just kind of slide down this way just a little bit. Perfect. That's good. Thank you.
Sheriff, we got you. You're not getting off that easy. Where do you want to share?
Can you be right there?
Okay, right here? Is this good?
Here we go. Right here? Thank you.
I love your voice. Right here. Thank you, ladies. Oh, wait. Uh-oh, wait a minute, one more picture. Can we get UC Health? One more picture. Dr. Brown, American Cancer, everybody, one more group picture. Sorry. One more group one. And everybody in. Everybody's in. Would you like to come? Did you get it taken? Okay, thank you all. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate everyone. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, with nothing further, I make a motion to adjourn.